The time now is 6:32 PM. The day is January the 4th, 2021. I'm Steve Horton, Mayor for the City of Covington, and I call this meeting of the Covington City Council to order. Will bow with me, please, and we'll say the invocation. Lord, we come to you. We thank you for your work in our lives and just in our community. Lord, we pray for our community, our state, and our nation, Lord, with all that's going on with the still that we're dealing with, with the coronavirus and the sickness and all that's going on with that. We just pray for your continued mercy and grace in healing, Lord, with regards to these things, and that you'll lead us out of it and into a brighter and better time soon, Lord. I pray for the council as we deliberate tonight over the business at hand, that you'll lead and direct us and help us to make those decisions which are best required as far as our community goes, Lord. Again, thank you for all these things, in Christ's name. Before I move on, y'all, I'd like to... You might have seen the email recently, but I was just gonna ask that we also do a moment of silence in memory of our former city mayor, Steve Bibbers, who died recently. Steve worked about, I think, 20, 21 years with the city before he became Fire Chief for the county. Just a great fellow. But he passed away recently, and I just asked how to do a moment of silence. And also, when you pray, pray for his family, too, in this time of loss for them. So if you will, let's just take a moment of silence, please. Thank you all. Again, I appreciate y'all remembering the family when you pray. Our next order of business is a discussion of the minutes for the regular city council meeting held on December 7th, 2020. Are there any errors or omissions noted in those minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on December 7th, 2020, as written?
So moved.
Mr. Floyd, was that you?
Yeah, it was me.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Williams was the second. Okay. Ms. Kett?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Baggett?
Aye.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Henderson, aye.
Okay. All in favor passes unanimously. Thank you. Our next item is number three. This discussion of changes to the agenda, and we will need to amend the agenda to add Agenda Amendment AA1, which means for the acknowledgment of the city manager's appointment of the court solicitor for calendar year 2021. Is there a motion to amend the agenda to acknowledge the city manager's appointment of court solicitor for 2021? Is there a first?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Floyd, is there a second?
Just Susie, I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Kett, thank you. All right. Are there any questions or comments? I'm sorry. All in favor, Ms. Williams, are you in favor?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Baggett?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Henderson?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. The next item is public comments for any item on or not on the agenda. And we do have some public hearing stuff coming up later, but this would just be, you know, anything that's there. Nick, would you see if there's anybody that wants to make any comments this time?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll start by reading the last four digits of phone numbers. And council members, if I read out your numbers, if you'll just let me know and I can mark your name. Start with 8543.
No comment.
5377.
That's Williams, that's mine.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, 3445. Two. Yes, go ahead.
Helen Nolly.
Yes, do you have a comment?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I had spoke with councilperson Ms. Williams, and I don't know whether she had had a chance to check on this or not, but concern of mine was big trucks coming down Avery Street from the Wofford Bend area tearing down power lines. And this has happened within the last month, about three times. And I was just wondering what can be done about this.
I did discuss that with Scott. I think Scott, wasn't he talking to you about that?
Yes, ma'am. And I did communicate with the team. And I don't want to put John or Kevin on the spot, but we did look into that. In fact, the team went out, looked in some of those that day. But Ms. Williams did pass that on to the team.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nolly.
All right, 0240.
No comment.
All right, 2145.
That's Susie.
Thank you.
No comment.
Okay. All right, let's see. Moving down to the names. Alex Ostendorf?
Yes, so I just... I'm here for the hearing number seven about the oil change. Do I need to make a comment now, or once that hearing comes up?
There'd be an opportunity at that time to comment.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Frank Malcolm? Gary Massey?
No comment.
Thank you. James Malcolm?
Here for item six.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer Ruttberg?
Here. No comment right now.
Thank you. Jonathan Shaw?
No comment.
Josh Gentry?
No comment at this time.
Thank you. Kevin's iPad. Paul's iPad.
That's Paul Daley. No comment.
Thank you. Philip Johnson? Preston Willard?
No comment.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And KB AUE? All right, that is everybody. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Nick. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Our next item is number five, and it's consent agenda. There's no items to consider there. Moving on to number six is discussion of public hearing for application to rezon 9155 Jackson Highway from NR2, Neighborhood Residential District 2, to NR3, Neighborhood Residential District 3 for proposed future development. Mr. Andrews?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. This item has been... Staff's put a lot of work into this, and this actually goes back even to the previous staff that were here. In conversations with Mark and with Trace, there are still some items outstanding here that I believe will impact your decisions, council. In fact, Trace has reached out to Phil Johnson and to the company to request a heat study. And while there was a recommendation by the previous staff, Mark and Trace, I don't want to speak on behalf of them, they can jump in, but I feel like it would benefit them more and benefit council more to have that traffic study completed before asking them or you all to weigh in. Saying all of that, I think a table would be needed this evening.
Okay, so is that a recommendation in the table item till we get the traffic study?
Yes, yes, sir. That's the recommendation, like that.
Okay. Mr. Turner, we would not need to move on into that public hearing in order to do that, would we, to table it?
No, sir. If you want to take action to table, you would have the public hearing at the appropriate time, when it's brought back before the council.
Okay. Well, council, is there a motion to table this item till... Do we have an idea, Mr. Andrews, how long before we'll have that information? I mean, we certainly, we have to pick a date certain, I guess.
Sure. Trace, Mark, do you have any idea on the time?
This is Mark. I do not have a timeline on that, Manager Andrews.
I would say more than two weeks from now, Mayor.
Okay, so what will be the first meeting date in... I don't have my calendar, but I can look at it. The first meeting date in February?
Looks like the first.
Okay, so you say it's the first of February?
February 1st.
Okay, so all right, council. Is there a motion to approve request to table Agenda Item Number Six to the first February meeting, 2021? Is there a first?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council members, I make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Is there a second?
Morgan.
Mr. Morgan, thank you. All right. Ms. Williams, are you in favor of doing that?
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Who did... Who requested... I have no problem with that, but who requested the traffic study?
The city engineer and planning... Well, the city slash planning zoning director.
Okay, that's fine. I'm in favor of it. Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Kett?
Yes.
Ms. Baggett?
Yes, sir.
Nick, can you tell him we lost Mr. Floyd? Mr. Floyd, are you in? I'll see if I can reach him on the other phone. Y'all bear with me a minute. Can y'all still hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to make sure I wasn't the one that was lost.
Yes, I'm trying to hear you. I hear you.
Okay, well, maybe they can hear you. I've got two phones going. Are you in favor of tabling?
A quick question I heard.
Go ahead.
A quick question I heard was, will this have a negative impact on the petition?
Were y'all clear on it? Mr. Andrews?
No, unfortunately, Mr. Floyd, I didn't hear the last part of that.
You want to know, will this cause a negative impact on the petition?
This shouldn't affect bias whatsoever. This is just at the request of staff. We want that additional information before staff makes a full recommendation or we make that to you and you have to make a recommendation. So I would say absolutely not.
Okay, are you clear, Mr. Floyd?
I'm clear. I'll be in favor for it.
Thank you.
I'm gonna try to call back you.
All right. All right. Motion passes unanimously. Then the table till February the first meeting, the first meeting February, February 1st. All right. Our next item, excuse me, is item number seven, discussion of public hearing for special use permit for an oil change business to be located at 3126 Highway 278. Mr. Andrews?
Yes, sir. Want to remind everyone to mute your phones if you can. We're getting a little bit of background noise here.
I hear that, too. If you're not muted, please mute.
Mark is our planning manager. I'm gonna go ahead and turn this one right over to Mark since he's worked diligently on this. Mark, you want to kick it off, sir?
Yeah, thank you, everyone, for the time this evening. I'm Mark Bichuk. Had the opportunity to meet a few of you, but a few of this might be the first time. So really glad to be with the city and would love to talk more with all of you as I go forward in this position. The second case came from...
Hold on, just unmute it, Mark. Mark, hold on. Again, anyone who's not muted other than the speaker, please do so, because we have a lot of feedback there. So let's try it again, Mark. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This case is the second case the Planning Commission heard at our December meeting, and it is at 3216 Highway 278. It is a small parcel that is adjacent and behind the QuickTrip at the corner of 278 and Emery. They're asking for a special use permit for automobile repair and maintenance, which requires a special use in the CM zone, the corridor mixed use. The location, as I said, is between Chick-fil-A and QuickTrip. The parcel extends... Just so you all know, I'm actually looking at a PowerPoint here. So if I say something that sounds like I'm supposed to be referencing something, you can see, just stop me and ask me a question real quick. The parcel extends all the way out to Highway 278 and then back behind the QuickTrip, but it does not extend all the way to the street behind. The current zoning is CM. The future land use for this parcel is mixed use. The concept here is for a two-bay quick-change oil maintenance repair shop run by the brand Take Five Oil Change franchise. They've submitted a site plan, which you should all have in your packet from the staff report from our December meeting. If you can see that, it's a drive-through quick-change with some parking to the rear. The lot is currently vacant, and staff is recommending approval of this special use. At our December Planning Commission hearing, there was a five to four vote for approval of this. And that's all I have right now. I'd be happy to take any questions if you guys have them, and I believe the applicant is here, if you have some questions for them as well.
This is Susie. I have a question for the applicant.
Go ahead, Ms. Kett.
Is the entrance and the exit through the QuickTrip parking lot?
Hi, Susie. This is Alex Ostendorf. I'm with Talks Away. I'm joined by Josh Gentry and Preston Willard, also with Talks Away. We are actually leasing this piece of property from QuickTrip. So they... QuickTrip currently owns all three parcels, and the existing curb cuts and access from the QuickTrip is what we intend to use. We will not be trying to get any other access, again, because QuickTrip owns the property, and that is part of our lease agreement. So no new curb cuts to the highway, just keeping everything that's there existing for access requirements.
So you will not be able to exit out the back like Chick-fil-A?
No, ma'am, we will not. Everything will be... There's two-way traffic for our concept plan and just parking in the rear. No exiting from the rear.
Yeah, that's what I thought I saw on the drawing, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, no, thank you for the question, and thank you, Mark, for introducing our application. Happy to have any other questions.
Yes, Councilman Morgan. I was going to ask, you said there would also be some type of maintenance going on back there. How major maintenance are you talking about?
Sure. And so the concept of Take Five is just minor, if you will, lube and simple car maintenance. There will be no excessive maintenance, not like a tire shop or a mechanic. So there's no noise or excessive car repair. Preston Willard, he is on, and he is actually the operator. Preston, do you want to jump in and answer any specifics about the extent of the operation?
Guys, I will say we are going to do a public hearing, so I mean, you may end up...
Can y'all hear me now? Okay, this is Preston, just making sure one more time y'all can hear me. Sorry, I was having a little bit of microphone issues there.
Yeah, Preston, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I'm happy to elaborate a little bit. Yeah, so Take Five, we pretty much just do oil changes. We'll change some wiper blades and air filters, but no brakes, no tires, no major fluid exchanges, nothing of that sort. So we really don't have, like, any scrap metal. We actually don't even have any lifts in our facilities or pneumatic air tools. It's all just centered around the oil change where the customer stays in their car. They can get in and get out and get on with their day.
What will be out of operation?
So we're open seven days a week, Monday through Saturday, seven to seven. And then on Sunday, we have a little bit of a shorter day, and that would be from nine to five.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
Mark, it's Steve Horton. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, are you ready for me to open the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I'll now type the time now. Let me get this right. Get my other clock turned up so everyone can see it. The time now is 6:55 PM. I will now call the public hearing relating to a request for a special use permit on oil change business at 3126 Highway 278. I declare the public hearing open. Each side will have 10 minutes to make their case, state their case or concerns. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak or on behalf of the approval of a special use permit on oil change business to be located at 3126 Highway 278? Again, this is an opportunity for people to speak on behalf of the special use request.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is Alex, again with Talks Away, happy to elaborate on behalf of the application.
Okay. Do you have a general statement you want to make, or you just...
Yes, sir. I have just a quick little note here to add. I do want to thank the city council for having Talks Away here to speak tonight. Also, I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. And lastly, thank the Planning Commission Board that we met back in December for approving their recommendation for our two-bay development. As stated previously, we will be taking over a vacant piece of the QuickTrip land and really benefiting the area as well as already complementing the QuickTrip. Again, we're using the exact accesses that are in place, so we won't be changing any of the impervious area that is currently there. And we really look forward to being a part of the community. And that's... I'll close it with that. Happy for any other questions from the council or the general public. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else that would like to speak on behalf of the special use request for an oil change business located at 3126 Highway 278?
Mayor Horton, I want to correct the address. It should be 3216, 3216 Highway 278.
Okay. Is that wrong just on my sheet, or is it wrong on...
It was wrong on the initial agenda, but when I sent the notes out, I corrected it and highlighted it and in yellow.
Okay, so I guess I missed that. So 3216 Highway 278. I appreciate you spitting that. I'm gonna make a quick change here on my paperwork. All right. Thank you, Ms. Gutierrez. Well, unless there's any other comments on behalf... The time now is 6:58 PM. And I'll ask, is there anyone on the call who wishes to speak against the approval of a special use permit on oil change business to be located at 3216 Highway 278?
Yes, Mayor, Jennifer Ruttberg would like to speak against.
Yes, ma'am. Jennifer, please proceed.
Okay. I live at 818 Rainbow Street here in Covington. I own Covington Pro Loop near West Street on 278. QuickChange moving to this on Georgia 36. I'd like to be clear, this isn't about having another shop in town. We have one of the busiest shops in the state. It has a very loyal customer base. My issue with this development is about an equal and fair application of the ordinances and supporting the plans approved by the city council for the city and CID. To give some history, my original shop, QuickTrip, was located on 142 near Tractor Supply for 10 years. When our landlord in 2018 notified us of this plant's level of building to build a new flash car lot, we looked around for other properties to relocate to. We identified a parcel on the eastern, less congested end of 278 near the corner of Hanus Street across from Butcher Block. We approached the city planning department on the possibility of building a new shop there. We were told very clearly by staff, economic development, and by elected officials that there was zero interest in putting any more automotive service-related businesses on 278. Since they require a special use permit, which only can be approved by the city council, any new automotive business could be. As members of the CID, we were okay with this answer since we have voluntarily invested in the CID for many years. So we're happy to abide by such rules if the ultimate goal was to, which was the improvement of the corridor. We will also find that this, as it meant that if we couldn't build, no one else could. This was fair and equal application of the rules and guidelines and was aligned with the objective of improving the corridor.
I agree with you.
So then we proceeded to purchase another property and shop south of the town and expanded that location. This course of action has cost us several hundred thousand dollars more than if we were able to do our original plan on 278. It has also taken a lot longer, going on three years versus less than one year, because of rehabilitating the existing and now building the new building there. Further, at my 278 location, Covington Pro Loop, we have gone through painstaking efforts including past and future expenses in the tens of thousands of dollars to prepare for the new traffic flow after we got complete phase one of the plan. We continually made sure all our work would align with the CID goals. Now the city is going to change the rules, allow a mobile automotive service shop into the corridor. This contradicts previous guidance and judgments. This change means when the dust settles, we have spent over $400,000 more than if we were allowed to do what Take Five is being allowed to do. Further, this proposed project will be done at an intersection that already suffers from massive congestion issues. Further, QT was going to move their building and then their entrances to get them off the roundabout and knew that was really needed to compensate for the new traffic. and knew that was really needed to compensate for the new traffic. They will not be able to do this if this project goes forward. My question is, why are you changing the rules? It doesn't seem fair. To make matters worse, if approved, you will have done this to a local business owners that have contributed to our city, our community, and our schools. But if you're going to change the rules, don't do it at a horribly congested intersection that is going to further approach an already, already dangerous intersection. Finally, the new planning and zoning staff, when they made their original recommendation of approval, they were not aware of CID's plans that GDOT had already approved the roundabout at Emery, two seventy-eight, and the associated median along two seventy-eight. This work is scheduled to start in two thousand twenty-three. The planning commission was also not aware of the same issue. It was brought up during last month's meeting, but multiple members of the planning commission said that they did not hear or did not understand what was being said. Only four members understood what was said and voted against after having all the information. The five that voted in favor, I do not believe were aware of the site factors involving the CID roundabout and median. I ask that you please make enforcement of the rules and guidelines fair and equitable. If that's the case, then you will deny this application. If you're going to change, then at least do it at an incredibly, then don't do it at an incredibly congested intersection and in a manner that will affect soon to begin roadway construction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ruppert. Uh, I, I have a question at this point for, I guess, staff, uh, Mr. Thomas and, and Mr. Beechuk. Ms. Ruppert raised the issue of the CID and that, uh, I guess when the approval by staff was made, that it did not take into consideration CID. Uh, do y'all have any comments about the CID and its impact and whether or not you were aware or not of it at the time?
I, I do. I mean, I, I did reach out to Stanley Mack. He is the, uh, this is Trace Thomas, by the way, sorry. He's the Traffic Operations Program Manager, uh, that's in, his, his group is coordinating the, uh, the roundabouts proposed for Highway two seventy-eight. I shared with him the, the concept and the site layout and he said that they did not have a problem with what was being proposed.
And, and is he with GDOT or ARC? Who, who is he with?
With G-, yes, he's with GDOT. He works under Scott Zengraph. Scott Zengraph is, is like the Assistant Traffic Engineer for the state. Stanley, again, Stanley Mack is his, uh, one of his, uh, subordinates and his title is Traffic Operations Program Manager and that group is funding the, uh, the CID roundabout project. Um, and he's, Stanley, Stanley Mack is the, is the gentleman that I reached out to, to, to make sure that there weren't any issues with, uh, with this.
Oh, okay, and I, I have one other question and this, this one is, uh, uh, is I guess more concerning to me than that one and, and hoping, hoping for some clarity and that is, and Mr. Turner may be able to deal with that, but also, uh, in her comments, Ms. Ruppert brought up that, uh, they, they, you know, they were told sometime in the last several years that there would be no further, I guess, such businesses along two seventy-eight. And that, uh, now that seems to be a change from what they were told. I mean, obviously, I wouldn't, I wouldn't hear at that time I was gone during that, but y'all recall discussions, decisions, council votes, anything that, that, uh, you know, supports that decision that, that, that it wouldn't occur and then now we're going against that?
Yes, Steve, this is Kenneth Morgan. Uh, I, I've been here, I came on in two thousand sixteen, unless it happened before I got here. I'm, I'm really not familiar with it, um, as far as anybody telling anybody that they couldn't have that location in that spot that she was talking about. Unless there was something that, um, you know, that we missed, that decision was made that didn't come before. I mean, I really can't, other than that, I really can't add anything else to that.
Okay.
This is Frank, I just say, I would echo that. To, to my knowledge, there's been, there's nothing in the future land use map that would, uh, give somebody that impression. There's certainly been no action taken by the council that gives them that impression. I don't know what some staffer or, or someone may have said, but there's been nothing, no decision made by the council leveled it, um.
Right, exactly.
In that regard.
Okay. Uh, o- other council members, y'all, y'all have any questions of either side?
Yeah, most everybody, Councilman Henderson, I'm just echoing, I don't recall, I've only been here three years, going on four. I don't recall in the past years to put anything in place where it will prevent a business like this to be established on two seventy-eight, so.
This was done in a, a verbally. We didn't go through any, any, the planning commission at that point because we figured that it would be done down.
Do, do you remember by any chance when that was, you said during the overlay? You, you don't, you don't remember? I mean, I guess something more we could, you know, put to you. Two thousand eighteen?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Frank, and, and, and any idea of what, I mean, what overlay discussion that would have come out of?
Honestly, no, and, and council members may correct if I'm wrong, but I think the CID has sort of been the driving force for the future of, of two seventy-eight. Certainly, in two thousand eighteen, that would have been what was under discussion. Um, but I, I, again, I'm, I'm not familiar enough with the CID to know if it has a land use component. My, my understanding always was it was focused on improving the public right of way and not so much on what the adjacent uses were to be, but.
Mayor, this is Tanithia.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I don't, I don't remember anything in reference to that either. Uh, what was the opposing views of those persons on the, uh, on the board that, that were against it? What, what was their thoughts on that? I mean, why were they opposed?
You're talking about the planning commission?
Yes, sir. Did they have that same thought in mind or did they bring that up as well?
Mr. Thomas or, or Mr. Beechuk, either one of y'all have any insight there?
Yeah, Mayor, this is Mark Beechuk. Um, at the commission meeting, this, this issue was raised um, about access and about CID. Um, that was most of the discussion that went on. There was some discussion about the operations. I'm not sure that anyone really expressed, um, opposition or, or favor of, of the operations. There was just some discussion about that as well. Uh, but the discussion about the potential roundabout coming in there uh, was discussed. That was, that was about all the opposition. There were some questions about the ingress egress. Um, I will say, I have spoken with Kathy Morgan, who's the head of the CID um, in the last week since that, since that meeting occurred and she did inform me, which I think Frank just mentioned, that the CID does not have a land use component to it. It is based on improvements in the right of way. Um, I asked Kathy specifically about some opportunities to, to bring land use into that discussion, into that overlay, and she mentioned that that had been a, a sticky issue in the past. And so that's why the CID stays out of land use decisions and just works with what they have in the right of way. So if that provides a, a little bit more context.
Thank you, I, I think it does, uh.
Mayor, this-
Steve, this is Suzie.
Wait, wait, just a minute. Ms. Kek, there was, there was somebody talking at the same time you were, and, but, but go ahead, Ms. Kek, and we'll see you as, as a comment after that.
Um, is it okay for me to comment on this right now before the vote?
I'm not aware of any reason why it's not, and, uh.
Okay, well, um, the reason I asked the question about the entrance and exit is because the traffic congestion right now at that intersection, turning into QT is horrible and I can't imagine adding another business into that entrance and exit. I actually avoid it because I think it's an accident waiting to happen without another business added. And the other thing I would like to add is, day before yesterday, I was coming down two seventy-eight headed east and the oil change place that they're on the right, they had six cars. They had two bays and three cars in each bay. And if this business was to do that much business, all of that's going to be dumping out on two seventy-eight there. I just, I think the business is beautiful. I think the building is beautiful, but I think it needs to be somewhere else other than that intersection.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kek. Other comments, questions?
Let me, uh, let me say something behind that, Steve. Uh, with the fact that CID is, is going to do improvements on two seventy-eight, uh, I have always said that if we could, it would be nice for GDOT to come in and go ahead and make everything right turn, which would alleviate that situation that Suzie is talking about because she will only be able to just go to the right and not be able to turn back out left into traffic. Do anyone know what we are as far as that or is that going to materialize or is that a part of what CID is planning?
That'd be a staff question, Mr. Thomas and Mr. Beechuk.
Um, you know, I mean, from my understanding, GDOT, uh, this is conversation or emails back and forth with Stanley Mack, uh, with GDOT, that they are moving forward. The project does have a PI number. And there will be a roundabout right in that general area and it should be, uh, that ingress and egress there should be right out.
Is that just in this area or would that be, uh, would that encompass all of two seventy-eight?
Most of, most of the, what I have, what I've seen in the concept shows of roundabouts and most of the, um, the, uh, the ingress and egress for that area or along Highway two seventy-eight are, are, are going to be, um, regulated or controlled through our cuts. Which, you know, is a right turnout.
That's good. That'll make a difference.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and, uh, well, I think what I'll do at this point, because neither side used up their, their ten minutes or whatever, but what I'll do is I'll just ask one last time before I close the hearing. Does anyone uh, on the call or council people have any other questions or comments regarding this item before I do call to close the hearing?
Mr. Mayor, this is Alex with Talks Away. Am I allowed to just address Suzie's comment about possible car stacking?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Suzie, um, and, and we, we talked at the planning commission, uh, meeting about that possible piece if there was a exorbitant amount of cars. The design and conceptual plan for our development here is to actually have upwards of thirteen parking spots in the rear and so traffic would be going, uh, if it enters, when it enters into our access from QuickTrip, it's actually going around the backside of the building, so there won't be any car stacking. Uh, if, if the, the two seventy-eight right turn only happens in the future, nevertheless, we would always have, we'll be having our car stacking in the back to, uh, to alleviate any stacking issues. So I just wanted to, uh, point that out.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I appreciate that. I was, I'm more concerned about the number of vehicles dumping into the QuickTrip parking lot.
Okay, from two seventy-eight or, or from our, uh, from our business? Sorry, just so I can help with any-
If, if you had six cars, that's six more cars coming into that entrance exit at QuickTrip. That's the issue I have.
Okay. No, noted and, and usually for, for, what we're trying to do with our model here is to actually be a complimentary service to QuickTrip just because it is in the auto, uh, St. Melma's auto, so uh, traffic that would be utilizing the QuickTrip would also be utilizing ours. In theory, the hope that we, that we are going after here, so I, uh, just wanted to try and help answer any other question there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other questions, comments from anyone?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is Jennifer Ruppert again. I just, I know it's been a minute or two since we were talking, but specifically the people that gave me an answer of absolutely no were Scott Gaiter and Ronnie Johnston. That's where I gather it was formal, um, you know, going through the planning commission, but that was uh, told to me verbally by those two gentlemen.
By whom?
I, I, I really, I, I, I lost whatever. I mean, the, the signal was, you, you told me, but then I didn't hear any, anybody's name and others may have. Could you repeat who, who you heard it from?
And louder too.
Verbally was told by Scott Gaiter and Ronnie Johnston. So at that point, I didn't put any more money into that route.
Okay.
There you go. That explains the council was never involved with it.
Correct, sir.
Hmm, okay.
Unfortunate.
Uh, it, la- last call, any other questions or comments? All right, the time now then is seven eighteen PM. I'll, uh, close this public hearing and, uh, let me change pages, y'all. Uh, I'll ask staff, staff, do you have any other comments or, or, or questions, or anything that you have for the council before we all for a motion to see where we are?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, council, is there a motion to approve a special use permit for an oil change business to be located at thirty-two sixteen, Highway two seventy-eight? Is there a first?
Yes, Mayor, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Mr. Morgan makes the first. Is there a second?
I second that motion, sir.
Ms. Williams makes the second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Uh, Ms. Kek, are you for or against?
No, no, I'm against.
Ms. Baggett?
No.
Okay. Mr. Henderson?
Mr. Henderson, yes.
Okay, Mr. Floyd?
No.
Mr. Floyd, there's no. Mr. Morgan, you made the first. You, you for or against?
For.
Okay. Ms. Williams, you for or against?
For.
Okay. Motion passes, uh, well, I'm sorry.
That's three-three.
It's the time now.
Mo- motion is a tie. Uh, I will, uh, break the tie and, uh, vote against it, thank you. So, so it does not, the motion does not pass. Okay, item number eight is discussion of an intergovernmental agreement with Newton County for the Kevinan Municipal Airport timber harvest. Uh, Mr. Andrews?
Yes, I know, council, you have some notes there in front of you, but I think we'll sum it up best. Uh, Mr. King's on the line. John, will you jump in for us, sir?
Yes, sir, uh, thank you for your time, uh, Mr. Mayor and Council. I appreciate, uh, the time. Uh, essentially, the FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration is in the process of decommissioning the Atlanta VOR, which is a very variable omnidirectional range navigation aid used in Atlanta and, uh, the majority of the airports in the Atlanta area. Uh, with that change, the criteria for the lateral and vertical guidance for our ensuring approaches into runway two-eight, which is on the east side, uh, has changed and essentially lowered the deck for the approach and departure corridor. Um, there is numerous trees that are penetrating that corridor, which is a safety hazard. Um, and that's what we know. What we don't know is how many trees are below the deck that are essentially, are eventually going to um, grow and penetrate that deck. So the FAA recommends that we clearcut that area, which is just east of the field, uh, where the new instrument approach lighting system is. Um, that property is owned by one parcel of the city and the other parcel is jointly owned by the county and the city. I have briefed Lloyd Kerr, uh, who is, and Councilor Turner and the county attorney have, have talked and come up with the, the agreement. And we are asking for an approval on this timber harvest. And I also plan to attend the, the commissioner's meeting, whether it be via teleconference or in person tomorrow night, to assist in any questions.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to approve an intergovernmental agreement with Newton County for the Kevinan Municipal Airport timber harvest as been discussed? Is there a first?
I make a first, please.
Okay, Ms. Baggett, thank you. Is there a second?
Yes, sir, I second that motion.
Okay, Mr. Henderson, thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. K?
Yes.
Ms. Baggett, you're still a yes, right?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson, you still a yes?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Floyd?
Uh.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Item number nine is discussion of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Oxford for sidewalk construction invoices, and this is an expostat to agreement, and, uh, we had to go ahead and sign it, uh, to keep things going, but, uh, the contract already existed for this, but, uh, uh, it, it, this time ran out on us because we were dealing with trying to get the GDOT side of the contracts approved, and they were having technical difficulties. So, the existing contract that, uh, expired, and so we have signed one. We just need your approval after the fact for my signature. So, is there a motion to approve the IGA with the City of Oxford for sidewalk construction work invoices as I've just discussed? Is there a first?
Sure move.
Mr. Floyd, Ms. Ms. Floyd was the first. Ms. Williams, you the second?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Questions or comments? All in favor, Ms. Williams, you still good with it?
Yes, sir.
Ms. K?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Baggett?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Henderson?
Yes, sir.
Floyd, I come back to you again. You still a yes, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. My next item, number ten, this discussion of an agreement with the Municipal Gas Authority of Georgia, MGAG, to provide marketing services for the gas department. Uh, Andrews, uh, you or Mr. Jewel want to talk a minute about that?
Yes, sir. This is, uh, more housekeeping. We do annually and participate with the gas authority as part of their public awareness program. Uh, that's the gist of it. Uh, Mike, Freddie, you wanna add any other details, sir? Mike, Freddie?
I know Mike said he would be on the call. They just may have you trying to trouble getting in.
He might be muted somehow, but, uh, this is, uh, something we do annually, and this, uh, this program assists the gas department in meeting the public awareness program. Uh, as you've seen in your notes there, and I know Freddie's on here, so should either one of you have, or if anyone has any questions, so they can jump on in.
I'm, I'm on the call. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, sorry about that. It is a housekeeping issue. It is something that we do, uh, annually. It's an annual agreement. It's just a renewal. It's something that the city has participated in for many years now. Uh, it, it not only gives us, um, marketing for our gas department throughout our service area, not just for the city, but all the areas out in the county and in Walton County that we serve, and it also is, uh, a vital part of our public awareness program that is required by the Public Service Commission.
Mr. Jewel. All right, council, is there a motion to approve an agreement with the Municipal Gas Authority of Georgia for marketing services as was just discussed by Mr. Jewel? Is there a first?
I'll also make the first.
Mr. Morgan made the first. Is there a second?
This Suzie, I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. K. Questions or comments? All in favor, Ms. Williams?
Yes, sir. Who pays for this?
Who, who pays for it? It'd be the city.
Yes. Okay. All right, I'm gonna say it. It's okay. Yeah.
Okay. Ms. K, you still in favor?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Baggett?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number eleven is discussion of a memorandum of understanding for joint water relocation slash construction at Brown Bridge Road at Yellow River. Mr. Andrews?
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, due to the G, GDOT bridge project, the, the City of Covington and Newton County Water Sewer, uh, enter into a, need to enter into an MOU to relocate the water main and services on Brown Bridge Road, area to be relocated from Spiller's Lane to the new bridge over the Yellow River. The estimated cost of this project is one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred dollars. Uh, I have Kevin, Trace, all on the line. Uh, should you have any questions? Kevin, you wanna jump in on this?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, the, while back, the council, um, approved us to, um, go into that, uh, uh, agreement with, uh, GWS to design that water relocation, and the water authority actually is gonna have contractors there on site, and what we'd like to do is, is go into that agreement with the water authority for that contractor to go ahead and do that work that was designed by GWS. Um, that will streamline the process and, and, and go through that GDOT project smoother, um, if, if the council agrees to let us, um, enter into that agreement.
Okay, uh, is the project, what did you do for?
Uh, yes, yes. Well, you, you know, it's, it's a, a project that was, um, that GDOT, you know, come up, said we're gonna redo the bridge, and so we, we, it, you know, we come to council and ask for approval to get the design work done, and, and now we're at the point where we gotta enter into that agreement with them, and we'll be back to council with that, asking for that, uh, approval for, once we start that. It's gonna be a, a while before that construction starts.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, council, is there a motion to approve the, the MOU between the City of Covington and Newton County Water and Sewer Authority for joint water relocation slash construction at Brown Bridge Road and Yellow River as has been discussed? Is there a first?
This Suzie, I'll make the first.
Thank you, Ms. K. Is there a second?
I'll second that, sir. Williams?
Ms. Williams, thank you. All right, then, uh, Ms. Williams, I assume by doing that, you're for it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. K, you too?
Yes.
Ms. Baggett, you in favor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes, Steve, I also had a question, too.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself here.
Yeah, yes, sir. Um, now, based on the amount that our portion of that will be a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, so they already have a contract in place. Is that the actual amount that we're gonna have to pay, and it's not gonna change?
That's I understand, and Mr. Morgan said that, that the cost would be approximately one sixty-eight, nine sixty-eight. That's, um, estimates through our engineers with GWS. Um-
So, how long, how long a process, you don't just protect them to do that?
I, I don't know, uh, Mr. Morgan. They, it's a GDOT relocation project, and they're gonna replace that bridge. So, it may be a lengthy-
That's a, that's a, that's a busy, busy road.
Yes, sir, it is, and, and I hope that they can, uh, expedite the project and, and move smoothly through it. Uh, but we, you know, like I say, the project's actually a, a county project that GDOT's funding, I think, is how that's working. But the water relocation's actually ours and the, uh, Newton County Water Sewer Authorities that, so, um, we felt that it was, in order to make that contract move a little smoother, we could work with the contractor that was already on site with the water authority.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Henderson, are you in favor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Floyd?
Yeah, just got one quick question. Uh, I was looking on the line item, uh, item number four says traffic control, five thousand dollars. What kind of traffic control would cost five thousand dollars?
Um, it may be detours, uh, or it may be, uh, lane closures or, or, um-
Could be, could be traffic control signage, those flashing board things or whatever. Those pretty expensive.
Uh, wow. You know, some, this stuff is, we have the design through GWS, and then once we get, if we get approval from, from y'all to get, enter into this, we will be able to meet with the water authority and go through that construction process, um, you know, as moving forward. And we'll have-
Okay.
We'll have more details at that time about how this project's gonna move forward, and we'll be brought into those construction meetings as they move forward as well. With the bridge replacement.
Okay.
All right. Well, it looks like we're all in favor, so it passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Sar and staff.
Yes, sir. Thank you, council.
That was a yes.
Yes. That was a yes, but Mr. Floyd, that's what Mr. Morgan asked. That's what I took it to be.
All right, sir.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item number twelve is discussion of GDOT special encroachment for State Route eighty-one at Cricket Frog Trail and permit application for a traffic signal. Mr. Andrews?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, the city requested GDOT to consider installing the rapid flashing beacons, RRFP, on State Road eighty-one, at the proposed Cricket Frog Trail crossing. The crossing will enable trail users, local residents, tourists, pedestrians and cyclists to safely cross State Road eighty-one in a controlled and timely manner. Uh, you have listed in your notes there some G, GDOT recommendations. I also have Trey, Randy, and, uh, others on the line. Randy, would you like to jump in, sir?
I can, Mr. Andrews, thank you. Um, this is something that is required any time that you cross, uh, GDOT right of way, which Highway eighty-one is. Where we're talking about here is just north of City Hall, just on the other side of the, uh, Emery Street Bridge. Um, we have gone through the process. Uh, the engineering group from the PATH Foundation, uh, put together the plans and submitted those to GDOT, and after some conversations and some, uh, adjustments, uh, they have a plan that, uh, GDOT is favorable with. Uh, this also goes before, uh, our, our city engineer, Trace Thomas, who I think is on the line as well. Uh, it requires his approval, uh, and his signature in order to do this. Um, this, this is required, uh, this is a flashing beacon. This is not a red light or a stop sign. This is a, uh, this is a flashing beacon that will, uh, alert traffic that someone is there to, to cross, and, uh, this will, um, this was part of the, uh, part of the budget that we gave you, uh, a few weeks ago when you approved the additional funding for the Cricket Frog Trail. Uh, this, the flashing beacons and the crossing was figured into that, uh, budget. Uh, the engineering was provided by the PATH Foundation, and, uh, so this is, this is a, a plan that has been approved, uh, by GDOT, and we just would like, uh, this, uh, the city council's, uh, uh, approval to, uh, move forward.
Okay, any questions from Randy, council? No questions from him. Okay. All right, is, go ahead.
Is the only time that you can get one of those, uh, intermittent, uh, lights is when it crosses the GDOT, uh, roads? Is that what you're saying, Randy?
Uh, n- no, ma'am. Uh, Ms. Honethia, you can get those, and we will be, we will, uh, also have one at, uh, Clark Street, uh, as well. Uh, it's just that we have to have GDOT's approval before we can cross a state highway with one. We can put those beacons anywhere that we desire, on a city street, but this is a, this is a state highway. Emery Street, Street is a state highway, so it requires their approval.
Okay. What was the price of that?
Ms. Honethia-
What was the price of that?
The price, uh, on the beacon itself is roughly six thousand dollars, so, um, uh, I would, we're estimating that the total cost of it is gonna be somewhere between ten and twelve thousand dollars for, for each one of those.
Randy, are, are those a part of the budget you already, and the funding you already, uh, been approved for?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. They, they were figured, they were figured into the, uh, the budget that was presented, uh, uh, for the completion of the trail.
Okay, thank you. All right, council, is there a motion to approve a special encroachment agreement and permit between the City of Covington and the Georgia Department of Transportation to allow for a designated Cricket Frog Trail crossing and flashing safety beacon on Georgia Highway eighty-one, Emery Street, north of, I guess, the eighty-one bridge, uh, as has been discussed?
This is Suzie, I'll make that first.
Thank you, Ms. K. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Floyd, other questions or comments, y'all? Okay, Ms. Williams, are you in favor?
Yes, sir.
Ms. K, again, you, you in favor?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Baggett?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Floyd, again, you in favor?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number thirteen is discussion of a resolution for a commercial solid waste increase. Mr. Andrews?
Thank you, Mayor. According to the contract with Advanced Disposal, the rates paid to the contractor shall be adjusted annually to reflect the changes in the Consumer Price Index. Adjustments shall be based on increases in the Consumer Price Index for all CPI, all items, water sewer, trash categories maintained by the Bureau of Statistic. The contractor must provide the city and customers at least thirty days' notice of such rate change on November tenth. Advance, uh, let the city know that the commercial customer is effective on January first, twenty-twenty-one. They will be increasing the rates two point five percent. So, we bring this before you this evening, and we have staff on the line to help, uh, address this. I know Mr. Turner has assisted a great deal as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Andrews. Is there a motion, council, to approve the resolution provided in your packets authorizing the proposed rate increase as requested in the letter from Advanced Disposal Systems? Is there a first? Is there a first? There may be some understanding here, council, I, uh, and Mr. Turner can, can help me here. They do, but I, I think based on the contract that you have and the ordinance that's written, if you don't pass this along to the, to the customers, then the city pays the, the contractor still gets paid, correct, Mr. Turner?
Yes, sir, that's right. The, the, what we owe to Advance has gone up by two and a half percent because of inflation. Um, so now, we, we're gonna pass this along to the commercial customers, or the city would be required to eat that two and a half percent increase.
So, let me ask the question before we take this. So, what, what, what is the actual price for that two point five percent dollar amount?
Uh, there's a schedule, and, and someone with staff may have in front of me. There's a schedule. Depends on how large the container is and how many days a week they're getting pick up. There's a sliding scale depending on how often you're getting pick up. There's, there's not just one number. There's about twenty numbers, actually. Depending on the size of the container and how often you're getting the dumps are picked up.
So, do we have the number of how many actual commercial customers this will affect?
Uh, Kevin, you happen to have that?
This, this is Brian. Um, as, as far as the, the number of commercial customers this affect, I don't have those numbers in front of me at this time. I can get those actual numbers prepared and, and relayed to you.
So, we are under the, we are clear that it's commercial only, right?
Yes, sir. This is our contract with Advance to do commercial, and not all commercial. Actually, Latham does a few smaller businesses where they just have roll-offs, I mean, just, you know, the typical residential style container. This is our contract with Advance for, for dumpsters.
That'll work. All right, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Morgan? Okay, Mr. Morgan, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Henderson? Questions or comments?
So, it's a cap at two and a half percent a year?
Yes, sir, inflation was actually higher than that, but two and a half was the cap.
Okay. I was just concerned that they just increased it two and a half percent because they could go to that, okay?
That's the maximum, and we did check the statistics, and it wasn't excess of that.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Williams, are you in favor?
Reluctantly, yes, yes.
Ms. Kek?
Reluctantly, yes.
Ms. Baggett?
Nope.
Morgan, you made the motion, you in favor?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Henderson, you made the second?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
No.
Okay, motion passes forward to you. Item number fourteen is discussion of a resolution to support continuation of the tax credit program for film and television production. And I'm the one that asked for this resolution to be, based on some information that we got out of the, forwarded to us through the Economic Development Office. And basically, I guess what I'd like to say is that the film industry generates substantial revenue annually, annually, within our city and county. And the resolution that we've got put forth, if approved, is intended to send a message to the state legislators that we, as an elected body, support them continuing to provide film businesses operating within the state, and in particular, our community, with incentive tax credits, as they've been doing. And, you know, the other side of this, we would hope that the other elected bodies within the county would also follow suit, and then we could send them all to the state together. There are other communities who are doing these same things on this behalf. So, my question would be, is there a motion to approve the resolution provided in your packets authorizing support of the state tax credit program for film and television production, I guess, continuing on as the state has been doing? And there is a, you did receive a copy of the resolution, so is there a first to approve that resolution?
This is Suzie, I'll make that first.
Thank you, Ms. Kek, is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Baggett, questions or comments?
Let me ask one, Steve, with this, I know it includes inside of the city and inside of the county, would this also encompass three ring studio?
It would be any and all film activities that I know of, Mr. Morgan. I mean, it's not in support of anyone in particular, but as far as I understand it, all film-making industry-type businesses that have been receiving a tax credit, then we would be in support of the state continuing to provide those incentive credits.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments? All in favor, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Kek, you in favor, you made the first?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Baggett?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Item number fifteen is discussion of the twenty-twenty-one LMIG program paving project. So, Mr. Andrews?
Thank you, Mayor. Public Works has compiled the new paving list with the twenty-twenty-one LMIG paving project. The new paving list consists of eleven streets to be milled and resurfaced. The estimated cost, based on the previous paving projects, four hundred ninety-six thousand, seven hundred twenty-two dollars and forty-seven cents, with a ten percent contingency that puts the total to five hundred forty-six thousand, three hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy-two cents. The contingency is to cover any unforeseen issues that may arise during the paving process. The City of Covington formula amount for the twenty-twenty-one LMIG program is a contribution of one hundred sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred sixty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents from the Georgia Department of Transportation. This leaves the City of Covington paying for three hundred seventy-seven thousand, excuse me, three hundred seventy-seven thousand, four hundred twenty-six dollars and forty cents of the remaining estimated cost. You'll see in your package a list of eleven streets there that range. And I'll go ahead and read through those if you're okay with that, Mayor, just for clarity's sake. Town Branch Port, Bethlehem Way, Stockwell Avenue, Turner Street, Griffin Lane, Malcolm Drive, Whispering Pines, Malcolm Court, Corridell Parkway, South Emery Street, McClure Street, and that's the location. And then, you'll see in your notes a beginning and ending point, if you does, Council. And also have Brian and Kevin on the line, should you have any questions regarding this.
So, let me ask, so Floyd Street, and you drive, wouldn't be a part of that LMIG list right now?
Um, I'll get my stuff up. We went through those, Mr. Morgan, they're on the list and they're coming. But we kind of, we did a estimate on Floyd, and it's a substantial project there. And it would far exceed the money that was left in the two thousand and eleven's floss that we would use to pay for this LMIG project.
Kevin, this is Fleta, I'm sorry, what are we talking about with Floyd? Because it's just deteriorating, and it's one of our most busy traveled streets.
Based on the numbers we got and used for the last LMIG project, it'd be approximately a million dollars to pay that street. Now, some of the issues and some things we've talked about was that the water line needs to be replaced along that before that happened. Because we sure don't want to come in and spend that kind of money on asphalt and then have to come back and put new water lines in. So, one of the discussion points we've had was maybe to put some sort of project together that would, you know, take care of those two in the same, in the project, and use the funds possibly from the two thousand and seventeen floss to maybe look at those projects. But that's a big, big ticket item. And of course, we use those ratings that we have to that co-paces to develop these lists. And it's coming, but it's just, you know, it ranks a little higher than some of these other streets. We felt like we could utilize the GDOT funds and the limited floss money that we have left from two thousand and eleven to accomplish these streets and still stay within that co-paces evaluation that we have and meet those, you know, the ratings of those streets are higher than Floyd, to be honest with you. So, we did a visual inspection of those streets and tied those to that co-paces data to feel, verify, and make sure that what we're seeing out in the field matches that data. So, and it does. So, between engineering and public works staff, this is the recommendation we have for that. And that, it gives us a good, a good bit of paving done, along with, you know, using the funds from two thousand and eleven's floss and, you know, using GDOT's funding as well to accomplish that.
One other question, Kevin, does the money that we collect from stormwater runoff cover doing the infrastructure for the water lines down Floyd Street?
It wouldn't do the water lines, but of course, if we were going to go to that extent, I wouldn't, I mean, stormwater would definitely be part of that. And yes, those dollars
Okay.
to be used as part of that infrastructure repair, you know, especially on the stormwater infrastructure that would be along there. Because, you know, the catch bases and the storm drains and the pipes and all the corrugated metal pipe that's underneath there would need to be evaluated. We've already got some evaluations on some of that. It'd all need some improvement along that corridor before we put the asphalt down. Asphalt's the last, would be the last step, so. Yes, ma'am, we could use that thing, correct me if I'm wrong, Trace, if you there?
That's correct. Thank you.
Guys, I mean, this is Steve. One of the things I guess I appreciate you taking a look at, I know you got to look at these things based on what money's where and those kind of things there. And I appreciate the work you're doing here. But, you know, we do get asked by a lot of people about when certain streets are going to be paved. And it's been, it's been a long time, but I can remember at one time, you know, we would create a list. And we even got away from it before I left. But, and I think the county used to do something like this too, but it's been a while since I remember seeing it. But, you know, maybe we try to plan ahead and put together some kind of timeline of when we think certain roads will make it to repaving. And maybe try to put that information out there, whether it's social media or on the website or whatever, so that people can have some idea that we are looking at these streets and what may be coming up in the future. All of that's got a caveat, it's all dependent on budgetary constraints. But it might help people have some, some understanding of what's going on and when something might happen versus not knowing at all. I'm just asking if you think about that, that's all. I'm not trying to pin you to it right now, just say and think about that.
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor, this is Scott. I think pending, you know, the caveat that you mentioned, money willing, I think that makes a
And that's always, and, you know, you can have the greatest list in the world and something else happen that you have to, you know, re-prioritize on, so I understand that. But it just might help people understand and realize that, hey, we are thinking about those streets that are concerned with them, and maybe what a timeline would look like, those things. Just food for thought.
Yes, sir.
All right, Council, is there a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one LMIG paving list and work as is provided in your packets, and it's been discussed tonight by staff? Is there a first?
Yes, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan, is there a second?
I second it, sir.
Ms. Williams, other questions or comments? Okay, again, Ms. Williams, you in favor?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Kek?
Yes.
Ms. Baggett? Ms. Baggett?
I'm sorry, what?
You in favor?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Next item is number sixteen, is a discussion of RFPs for broker services for employee benefits. Mr. Andrews?
Thank you, Mayor. Remind everyone to please mute your phones if you aren't speaking, please. The HR department recently conducted an RFP to solicit bids for broker services for health and ancillary employee benefits. There were nine responses to RFP. HR assembled a committee consisting of HR staff, finance, the assistant city manager, and an elected official, as well as a retired reconsumer. After several review meetings, the committee came to consensus that the best three proposals were Relations Epic and NFP. Additionally, we included a fourth, being Gary Massey's agency here locally. So, we've spoken to the group of you over the last couple of days. And we, this has been quite a process. This is something that, again, we involve staff, we involve the committee in saying all of that. The group was completely unanimous in their recommendation, which was not the local option. And saying all of that, I'll turn over to Freddie, let Freddie speak a bit to this, because Freddie sat on this committee. And Freddie, you mind chiming in as well, sir? Paul, you want to jump in if Freddie's not able?
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me, Scott?
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Freddie.
Hey, Freddie, you there? Yeah, I'm there, I guess, I'd unmuted, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, as Scott alluded to, we had nine responses to the RFP, and then we're down to three, and included a local option also. We went through all of the processes and really graded everyone on the different merits of their proposal. We also had four follow-ups, several of the four that we had, do presentations and asked them all the same questions. What we found in NFP was that they were able to handle all of our monthly billing invoices, any change of status within those things. They could handle our Cobra. They could also act as an extension of the staff and the team to handle all the administrative needs that HR has. Also, they cover many local government accounts, and specifically, local government health is their primary focus. And additionally, they offered us a cost savings. We're looking at this from a holistic approach, and that's what I liked what Scott before with all of these proposals. The staff additionally, we looked at also, we have additional benefits that are available now that weren't available before, which is voluntary life, a long-term disability, legal coverage, ID theft protection, all of those are at group rates that are available to us. So, a lot of those things we were looking at and came to the conclusion that NFP was the best product for us. We have a dedicated, a dedicated staff person to handle the City of Covington's needs that'd be available to us. But now, we also have, Paul's still here, if you need to ask any other questions, and you can answer any questions from a committee perspective.
Okay, and I think the people that, providers or people that submitted RFPs are on the call too, correct? If the Council has a question?
Yes, Mayor, we didn't want to get into a full-fledged debate for everyone's sake this evening, but if there are questions directly for any of the providers, they are on the line, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, before we move into, I guess, seeking a motion, are there any questions just right off the bat, based on what Mr. Morgan has said, or city manager?
Yeah, Steve, this is Kenneth Morgan. I wanted to go ahead and chime in a little on this. I actually had a chance to look at the presentation of both the ones that were actually involved. I want to go ahead also and say that I agree, I mean, I appreciate staff for the work that they have done and the time that they have put into it, you know. But what staff has done is come to us to give us the recommendations of what they feel like, you know, is in the best interest of our employees. But as I looked at those videos, I saw strength and weight in both of those presentations. And what I would like to say personally, from my standpoint, I would like for us to go ahead and table this item tonight, because I don't really feel like, as a council, we have actually got together and really vented through this thing, because I see some other options and opportunities in here that I don't feel like has been brought to the table. And I'm not at a position tonight to where I'm willing to go ahead and make a decision one way or the other about what we need to do as far as insurance. And, you know, there are some different things that we can look at, you know, from this standpoint, we're making decisions with our taxpayer dollars. We're also making decisions for our three hundred and fifty-something-plus employees, and we don't know how they feel about it, or whether they are in favor of what we do one way or the other. And I just think it's one of those things to where I just think we need to vent this thing a little bit more before we actually make a decision on this tonight. So, if I had to say anything tonight, I'd rather we go ahead and table it, have a work session where we can get together and really vent through it as a council, and really look at it. Because I think in the process, there could be a win-win for our local agent as well as NFP. But that's just where I am.
So, are you putting that in the form of a motion to table? I mean, that's what I guess I need to know.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so there's a motion by Mr. Morgan to table this item for further discussion. And I guess we would say, got to do a date certain there too, till the first meeting in February, which would be February the first.
Mayor Med?
Go ahead.
I believe we have some time restrictions coming upon us. I believe that was asked in some of the small group sessions we had. Paul, is there any reason why we cannot table, or?
Well, I mean, uh, both, both agents or any of the agents that we're gonna be looking at are, are gonna be, you know, looking at, uh, renewal. Our renewal comes up in, in July. Of course, that process starts, uh, late January, early February, so whichever agents we go to, we, we want to give them enough time to be able to negotiate with, uh, Cigna or Blue Cross Blue Shield, or whoever they decide to go with, we want to give them enough time to do that, um, prior to, uh, our renewal in July. So, that, that normally takes about a three-month period. Uh, Mr. Massey or Mr. Shaw might be able to speak more to that, um, but I think the latest that you would want to go would be, um, the first of February.
Okay. Well, all right, you know, I mean, we, we got, we got a motion, so is, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that motion, Councilman Henderson.
Okay, Mr. Henderson, seconds. Questions or comments? All in favor?
It's okay with me, sir.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Kett?
It's okay with me.
Ms. Baggett?
I'm ready to vote, I did my homework now.
Okay. Mr. Morgan, obviously you made the motion, so you're in favor, right? Okay, Mr. Henderson, you in favor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Floyd?
I'm also ready to, to vote, I, I, I've made my decision, so I'm ready to vote, make a motion to vote.
Okay, well, right now, if I'm counting my numbers right here, though, we got a, we got a first and a second, and, uh, four to two to, to table till February the first. Am I, did I miss anything in my count there?
You're correct, sir.
Okay.
So, can we say, can we, uh, can we determine at what point we can get together and actually have a, um, a, a work session with council, or we can actually vet and work through it and come up with the options that we feel like that may still be out there?
Sure, I mean, uh, you know, we-
We can have the work session, there's early, go ahead, Mayor.
Well, I was gonna say, I said, we, we can make that decision right now, if I don't look at your calendar and decide what works for everybody.
Well, I, I just want to make a comment, I surely hope these work sessions are not gonna be over the telephone.
No, that's why, no, that, that's why I, I want us, I would like for us to do it in person, that's why I didn't think we need to make this decision over the phone. It's too important.
Okay.
I, I just want to remind everyone that staff has spent dozens of hours in the committee as well, uh, on this already, so if we're, we're gonna kind of reinvent the wheel or look at some hybrid format, expect to pour a lot of time in it, because there's already a, a great deal of time in, invested here. And saying that, I also think, go ahead.
I didn't hear you talking, go ahead. Mr. Andrews, you were talking, but I didn't, I thought you, like, maybe you heard somebody else say something, but I didn't hear anybody talking with you.
Yeah, I didn't want to, someone jumped in, I didn't want to speak over them, um, and, and also in terms of scheduling, it's, it's pretty hard to corral all you guys' schedules, so with your permission, Mayor, rather than keeping everyone in line now, I'll call each of you, uh, early tomorrow and get that coordinated.
That'll work for me if it works for everybody else, yeah.
That's fine, let's just get it done.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
So, all the necessary information that the committee had at their fingertips will be also available, uh, during, during our meeting.
Yes, ma'am, we'll arrange for, uh, we can share the presentations as needed, um, and I'll speak to you on your, on the phone tomorrow and try to nail down exactly what each of you want to see and coordinate, but please plan to, I, I'd say at least two hours if you want to get even a fraction of what the committee and staff put, put in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Item number seventeen is discussion of the first reading of an ordinance for the City of Covington, and, uh, basically what's happened is that, uh, yeah, I guess recently and probably at, at greater times in the past, even some that I remember years ago, we've had complaints about undesirable activities taking place in city-owned parks, a lot of it after dark, uh, uh, you know, some of just people congregating, loud cars, fast driving in and out of them, a, 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 a number of different things, and, uh, the city attorney has, uh, went back and, uh, drafted, uh, a new version, a new ordinance, amended ordinance relating to city-owned parks to provide clarity for park rules, permitted activities and operating hours. So, the question is, is there a motion, uh, to approve a first reading of an ordinance of the City of Covington, Georgia, to amend the Covington Municipal Code enacted and adopted on the sixteenth day of October two thousand and one, as amended by previous amendments, to alter certain provision of Title twelve of the said code of ordinances for the purpose of amending Section twelve dot two zero dot zero one zero definitions in Section twelve dot two zero dot zero two zero, establishment of park hours and designated parking areas of Chapter twelve dot twenty parks thereof to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. Is there a first?
Yes, Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Mr. Morgan, thank you. Is there a second?
This is the other-
Councilman Henderson?
Okay, Ms. Kett got in front of you there, Mr. Henderson.
Yes, sir, it's fine.
All right, Ms. Williams, you in favor?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Kett?
Yes.
Ms. Baggett?
Um, may I ask a question, please?
Yes.
Um, can we include the cemeteries in this, please?
Well, I, I don't know that, that cemeteries fall under this particular ordinance, but we can certainly look at them.
This is Frank, yeah, specifically, this one only deals with parks. I'm trying to look real quickly to see what, I think there's a separate ordinance on the cemeteries, um, but there's, we can certainly look at hours on the cemeteries as well, if that's some, but y'all, it'd be your prerogative, but it would be a separate code section.
Okay, thank you, never mind that.
Okay, but you in favor of this?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Morgan, you still in favor?
Yes, I am.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes, sir.
Floyd?
I am, but I got a question, if I could, or, or addition, on the, uh, on the fourth page at the top, is, uh, where it says either the Covington Lions Club or the Covington Boy Scouts of America, I think that should be identified as, uh, Covington Troop two two two, instead of Covington Boy Scouts of America.
I can certainly make that change.
Okay, yeah.
That, that's not new language, that's, uh, been in there for years, we will certainly make that change.
Yes.
All right, motion passes unanimously, thank you. Item number eighteen is discussion, I'm sorry, of the first reading of an ordinance for the City of Covington, amend an electric service tariff, and the Assistant City Manager, Freddie Morgan, is the discussion then?
Uh, yes, sir, Mayor Steve. Um, it, this was to look at some of our, uh, some updates on some of our rates. Uh, I may just ask you all just to table this until the, uh, the next council meeting, because, uh, Frank had some questions that we weren't able to get back together on, so I wanted to make sure we, we address those before we follow through with this, uh, number eighteen, if we can table them.
Okay. All right, Council, uh, is there a motion to table item number eighteen to the first?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Mr. Morgan, thank you.
I have a second.
Was that Ms. Williams?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay. All right, all in favor? Uh, Ms. Williams, you in favor, correct?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Kett?
Yes.
Ms. Baggett?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously to table, thank you. Item nineteen, does somebody say anything?
Nope, no, I was just making sure, uh, Paul looking at for nineteen, sir.
Sir? Say that one more time, Mr. Andrews.
No, I was just, uh, I was just stalling, making sure we're looking at nineteen, that's all, trying to be helpful.
Okay, yeah, item number nineteen. Discussion of miscellaneous appointments, uh, for the city attorney, municipal court judge, and positions, I'm gonna do these, uh, individually. Uh, is there a motion to reappoint Frank Turner Jr. and include the services of Bruce Schoenfield in terms of law firm as city attorney? Is there a first?
Somebody?
Mr. Floyd, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Morgan, questions or comments? All in favor, Ms. Williams, you, you in favor?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Kett?
Yes.
Ms. Baggett?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Morgan, I'll ask you again, we're on the phone, so.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Next one is, is there a motion to reappoint Carter Baig as the City of Covington Municipal Court Judge? Uh, is there a first?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Mr. Morgan, is there a second?
Second.
He was there.
Second.
Ms. Williams?
Williams, yes, sir.
Okay. Questions or comments? All in favor, Ms. Williams, yes?
Yes, yes, sir.
Ms. Kett?
Yes.
Ms. Baggett?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Morgan again?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. The last one under this item is, is there a motion to reappoint Piedmont Physicians Group, uh, as City of Covington Physicians? Uh, is there a first?
I'll, I'll first.
I'm, I'm, it, it's muffled up, I couldn't tell. Is that you, Mr. Morgan?
Yes, it was, sir.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Floyd. Questions or comments? All in favor, Ms. Williams, you in favor?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Kett?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Ms. Baggett?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Morgan again?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Floyd again?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty is discussion of Mayor Pro Tem elect, and, uh, the recommendation is Councilmember Baggett, uh, and this is based upon a city ordinance requirement, uh, and a prescribed nominating process that's been approved by various, uh, present past councils. So, the question is, is there a motion to appoint Ms. Baggett as the Mayor Pro Tem elect, and in doing so, unless she becomes unable or declines to serve, Ms. Baggett will serve as the Mayor Pro Tem in two thousand and twenty-two, so she'd be the Mayor Pro Tem elect for two thousand and twenty-one, but then the Mayor Pro Tem in two thousand and twenty-two. Ms. Williams, who was the Mayor Pro Tem elect for two thousand and twenty, will be the Mayor Pro Tem for two thousand and twenty-one, so is there a motion to appoint Ms. Baggett as the Mayor Pro Tem elect for two thousand and twenty-one?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Mr. Morgan got there in front, were, were, were you speaking too, Mr. Henderson?
That's the ten-four, yes, sir.
I've got you as a second, then, questions or comments? All in favor, Ms. Ms. Williams?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Kett?
Yes.
Ms. Baggett?
I, yes.
Okay. Morgan, Mr. Morgan again?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson again?
Yes, sir.
Floyd?
Yes.
Motion passes-
Everybody better do right and stay well.
That's right. All right, uh, trying to see where we are now. Item number-
Twenty-one.
Item AA one is acknowledgement of the city manager's appointment of Cheryl Freeman as the, uh, Port Solicitor for, uh, calendar year two thousand and twenty-one. I don't guess it requires a vote, other than just our acknowledgement of that, so you all are informed.
Is that the one that have it now?
That is.
That's correct.
Mr. Andrews, you got any comments?
No, just, uh, wanted to state, uh, excited about that appointment, and just bringing this, uh, before you as a formality, like some other positions you've seen recently, and, um, just want to make sure we're transparent with everyone.
Good to know.
Thank you.
Well, we're down to near the end of the meeting again, we're back to public comments. Mr. Matthews, would you see if there's any public comment?
Yes, sir, I was, and I, once again, have been talking for about thirty seconds on mute, um- Welcome to the crowd. Thank you. Uh, if I call out your phone number, you'll press star six, um, and that will unmute you. Last four digits, five, three, seven, seven, two, three, nine, nine, two, three, six, six, seven, four, six, eight, one, zero, zero, one, three, four, four, five, zero, zero, six, eight, Bobby Shepherd.
Happy New Year, everyone, no comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you.
And Saber iPhone. And that is everybody, um, Mayor.
Thank you, Nick, I appreciate it. Mr. Andrews, you got comments?
Uh, I'll be brief, sir, uh, actually, I'm gonna turn over my time to Trey to do a quick update on filming, and then Freddie has two items right after that as well. Uh, you want to kick it off, Trey?
Yes, sir, uh, Happy New Year, everybody. Uh, you guys got an email, um, I guess it would be last week now, about filming coming up in the downtown area. Legacies is back, which we are excited about, um, and they are gonna be here tomorrow setting up, and they will complete their, uh, their filming on Thursday, they'll be setting up tomorrow, and Wednesday they'll film Thursday, and then Friday they will strike, so we will not see them, uh, Friday after ten AM. Um, so again, you guys have that in the email with details, but if you guys have any questions about that, in there.
Um, Trey, I had a question, it didn't have times on there, are they gonna be filming at night or in the day, do you know?
In the day, yes, ma'am, um, for the fifth and sixth, it's gonna be seven AM to seven PM, and then the, uh, the seventh, they will, I said day, they'll film till, I shouldn't say film, they'll wrap by eleven on the seventh, and then on strike day, they'll start striking at five AM and be done by ten AM, so there will be some night film, but it will be completed by eleven PM, so it will be overnight.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, other comments?
Uh, Mayor, uh, one second, actually, uh, Freddie's got a couple items, I, I wanted, uh, Freddie, can you do a quick, uh, update on prepay, and then also maybe introduce, uh, virtually, uh, one of our staff members?
Uh, yes, sir, yes, sir. Uh, on the, on the prepay end, we're still moving forward, um, couple of items they've gone through and gotten the business rules, discussion established and completed the configuration. They're still working with our customer interface, uh, system BSNA, they've got to work through some integration issues with BSNA, uh, as we continue to move forward. I think some of that may have been happened because of the holidays, but that's, that's just in the works on the prepay, so as we continue to try and move that forward. Uh, once they get those, uh, uh, BSNA issues or, or the integration done, we should be able to, to have a better, uh, plan ahead of you for that. Uh, also, the, the second bit of, of good news that we have is, uh, we, uh, with you to get a deprocess and, and have selected Sean Doe, uh, as our next Electric Director, he'll start on January the eleventh. Uh, Sean comes to us from the, uh, City of Eastpoint, where he's been the Electric Director for the last three years. Uh, he was the, uh, line superintendent with Eastpoint for two years before that, and then for, uh, twelve years, he's with, with the Virgin Islands Water and Power Authority. Uh, Sean's, uh, lives in Oxford, he lives on our electric system, uh, you know, again, he's been running Eastpoint, who has over thirty thousand customers for the last three years. Uh, really like his experience, he came up through the ranks, uh- Uh, really like his experience, he came up through the ranks, uh, as electrical design engineer, and then became a line superintendent, and then became a director. So, we're looking forward to him coming on board on January the eleventh.
Thank you so much, Freddie, Trey, uh, just want to remind everyone for the rest of my time that COVID numbers are on the rise, um, we just experienced it from a staff standpoint, from our highest level ever, and that's just a, a small fragment of the community. So, I just tell everyone, just remind everyone, please use an abundance of caution. If you, uh, can't be six feet away from someone, please wear a mask, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews, uh, all right, comments from the, from the mayor and council, Ms. Williams?
That's, uh, very blessing, happy and prosperous New Year to everybody, and I did owe what, uh, God said about being safe and taking care and being vigilant about what's going on, because we see that the numbers are going up all around this country, and we're losing so many people. And it's, it's, it's gotten really, really sad, so be careful, everybody, don't take anything for granted. That's it for me, goodnight.
Ms. K?
Uh, I don't really have anything to say, we, uh, tabled a couple of important issues tonight, and, uh, I look forward to resolving them in the near future, and I wish everybody a Happy New Year.
Thank you. All right, uh, Ms. Baggett?
Uh, Happy New Year, thank y'all for serving.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
Believe it or not, I'm good tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Henderson?
I just want to wish everyone a Happy New Year.
Thank you, sir, thank you so much. Mr. Floyd?
I'm too, I'm good, Happy New Year.
Thank you, well, again, I'll say a couple of things everybody else said, I, I, I'll frame it a little different, I, I, I'm gonna say, I hope and pray for a healthier and happier twenty twenty-one for us all, and our community, and our state, and our nation. Uh, I really hope this vaccine gets out, and a lot of people, uh, you know, get protected, and, uh, just look forward to better times, I, I want to mention something in our community, though, and it's all, but, uh, homelessness abounds right now in our city, and, uh, and it may become worse, you know, again, uh, a lot of people are still out of work, struggling, and, uh, it's compounded by the fact that the local shelters operating at a much reduced capacity, uh, with regards to space, because, again, that they had one of the three buildings damaged, or that tornado that came through recently, and, uh, and so that, the construction has not started on trying to get that repair work done yet, but, uh, I think things are starting to move as far as getting ready for bids and those kind of things, and, uh, but either way, we're moving into wintertime, and it's been very cold here lately, and so when I, I expect colder weather to come, I'm not a weather forecast, but I've lived long enough to know what wintertime weather looks like, as many of you, and if you don't have a home, and you don't have somewhere to stay, uh, and you're outside, it's cold. And, uh, and so I talked to the commission chairman, uh, they've got emergency management through them, and just trying to figure out, you know, if, if he had any ideas or suggestions for, you know, how we might come together and, and, and at least create a warming center, a place where somebody can get in out of the extreme cold, whether it be in the day or the night. We've not reached any resolution on any of that, just been a preliminary discussion, but I think plans are that this, that, that representatives from the city and the county, the housing authority, and the homeless shelter will hopefully come together and talk about this, and determine whether, whether and who and how some grant money might be obtained, how some space may be utilized to do these things, and, uh, I just, you know, I guess what I'm asking y'all is for your thoughts and your prayers on this item, and, uh...
Yes, sir.
Because it's gonna take everybody, you know, I, I think, thinking about this and trying to help determine how we can best look out for those who are most vulnerable to the elements, who, again, have nowhere to call home. And so, just wanted you to know that, that that's been a kind of a, a preliminary discussion, but I hope it becomes, uh, more, uh, in-depth and, uh, fruitful in, in some kind of solution.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, that, that's all I have, uh, unless y'all have something else, I'll just, again, say Happy New Year to everybody. I appreciate you, the hard work that you, that you do on behalf of the community, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Mr. Morgan, is there a second?
I'll second, please.
Ms. Baggett? All in, all in favor, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
I'm gonna scroll around the list, Ms. Williams, Ms. K?
Yes, yes.
Okay, Ms. Baggett?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Morgan, again?
Yes, please.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned, the time now is, whatever my clock says, eight-twenty-eight p.m., thank you.